There we go. Tony, we're on. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 22nd, 2018 meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. The board's coming out of a paperwork review and I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item is a review and approval of consent items. In the consent agenda, we have, number one is January 8th, 2018 meeting minutes. We have an accounts payable manifest, January 16th of $35,003,2324, and January 23rd of $70,019.60. We have an AP manifest, January 16th, $29,684.55, and January 23rd, $29,047.32. Payroll manifests, January 18th, $53,003.2753, and January 25th, $50,735.28. We have five veterans exemptions, and we have reconciliation for November from the town clerk, and December reconciliations from the tax collector and the town clerk. Are there any other items that members would like to have placed on the agenda? Hearing on, public input will occur no earlier than 6:15 PM. Okay, the regular order of business, item one, we have Warren Street Architects and Ekman Construction.
You want to vote the consent?
Motion.
Um, sorry, thank you. Hearing then, is there a motion to approve the consent?
I so moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel.
Second.
By Mr. Schaefer. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, 5-0-0. Sorry about that.
We're all anxious to get into this.
I know. I'd like to, if I may, precede this presentation with a little editorial comment. We were at the public hearing, and I just need to tell the public and taxpayers, we heard the public. The whole point of a public hearing is to take input from the public. We did, and we heard. On the fire station project, there were several questions, several comments, several suggestions. We did hear that. So, what we did do, what I asked for Monday morning, or Monday, we convened a group of people, which included myself, Selectman John Brunel, the Selectman Kurt Schaefer, the Chair of the Budget Committee was out of town, so the Vice Chair, Carrie Douglas, joined us, Chief Freitzl and Deputy Chief Nickel, along with representatives of Ekman Construction and the architects. We convened Monday afternoon for the purpose of sharpening the pencils and seeing what could be done to bring the project more in line with what the public apparently wished us to bring it. I am very proud to say that after six hours of intense meetings last week, Monday and Friday, between, and I want to thank the architects and Ekman for all of the work that they put in. We were able to accomplish that task, and the entire group came to unanimous agreement that the product that you're going to see tonight is probably the best product of a collaborative effort that we've seen in a long time in town. It was unanimous that we moved this forward, and I was very proud of the efforts of everyone on that committee. And I want to thank, sincerely thank, everyone, the Selectmen, the fire officers, and Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, Troy, I left you out and I apologize. Troy was with us. And it was good government at its best, and it was responsive government and doing what we needed to do for the people of this town. And with that said, I'd like to introduce the participants and produce the updated information. And who would like to start? Chief, Chief Freitzl. Chief, could you introduce?
Sure. So you pretty much stole my thunder as far as your intro, so I'll spare that.
I needed to thank everyone because it was a very important effort.
But I would just reiterate your comments that a lot of work went into this last week and based on the feedback that we had received. With us here this evening is Preston Ekman from Ekman, Preston Hunter from Ekman Construction, and John Holly from Warren Street Architects. So, I think with no further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Preston here to kind of start through the presentation, and we'll field any questions you have as we go.
Okay, great. I also want to mention John Deloya from Ekman is also here, and John's been involved with this process as well, so I'm going to give him the opportunity to chime in. So this is a revised project, and we'll get right into the costs right off the bat because I know that's what everyone is interested in. So, the chart that's on the screen shows in the first column, the costs that were presented shortly after the new year, and those reflected a 13,100 square foot building. And the second column is the updated project costs for an 11,000 square foot building. You will see that there is a line item of roughly a little over $1.5 million in construction costs that's been removed from the project. We'll talk a little bit more about the items that were removed, we call that value engineering. And then below that, you'll see that the soft costs, the owner's soft costs, were also reduced, and Chief Freitzl can talk to that a little bit. So that brings us to a total project cost of slightly over $3.7 million, which works out to $339 per square foot total project cost. So, the value engineering items, you can see there's a list of over 30 items that have, reflect modifications to the design, and I can speak to some of the bigger ones. One of the aspects of the project that was a cost driver were the apparatus doors. We had 10 apparatus doors which were folding type doors, and we recommended replacing those with an overhead door for cost savings purposes. This not only saved the cost of the door, but also allowed us to slightly shrink the length of the station, the apparatus bay area, and also gave us more flexibility with the structure for the apparatus bay itself. We looked at making some reductions to the site work, which will be reflected in a revised site plan which we'll show, and that essentially reduced the amount of work behind the station, and that resulted in some significant savings. HVAC and plumbing was another cost driver for this project. We looked at simplifying the HVAC systems, reducing the number of zones, changing, you know, cast iron waste, sanitary waste to PVC. We looked at the trench drains, the width of the trench drains were about 18 inches wide, and six inches are, six inch trench drains are commonly used in fire stations. So, we looked at a number of those different things, also including reducing the number of plumbing fixtures in the restrooms to meet code minimum, and that resulted in some savings as well. We've also eliminated one bay in the apparatus bay, so now it's a four bay station. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we've made some slight adjustments to the size, the length of the bays. We've also eliminated three offices and a hallway that was in the original plan. I mentioned that we were able to make some structural changes, some structural design changes to the apparatus bay. The original design had concrete, what were called concrete portal walls. Essentially, the door, the walls where the door openings were located were cast in place concrete, 16-foot high concrete walls. Very specialized type of construction, not that many foundation subcontractors in the area do that type of work. We spoke with the structural engineer in coordination with Warren Street Architects and suggested some cost-saving ways to eliminate the need for the concrete portal walls, to more of a conventional wood frame and structural steel structure for the apparatus bays. And in addition to that, also continued with the wood framing throughout the rest of the apparatus bay as opposed to the CMU that was included before. We also looked at making some electrical reductions. With the smaller building, our expectation is the size of the generator will also be reduced. We removed lighting controls and light harvesting sensors and some other items that were included in the original design to reduce cost in electrical and lighting. And also with a more simplified HVAC system, you'll also see less cost in electrical as well. So in addition to that, we also looked at a number of different, what are called cosmetic reductions, miscellaneous cosmetic reductions, including inside and outside of the station itself. We'll be looking at some different flooring options, ceilings, trim, windows in the cupola as well to find some savings there. The previous design had an exterior radiant concrete apron, which required its own dedicated boiler, and that has been changed out to asphalt. We initially had included in our budget some additional money for enlarging the gear storage room. The new design you'll see now is a modified layout which incorporated some additional space in order to provide 40 gear lockers. And a number of these other items are smaller items, I probably won't go through each of them. There were a number of costs that were asked to be carried on the construction side of the budget that are more typically carried in the owner's side of the budget, so some of those items switched from one side to the other. We, in addition to that, removed ballards from the inside and outside of the bay after discussions with the chief and the deputy. Seems that they have a very good track record for not hitting the ballards, so we thought that was an area that could be, provide some savings. The rest of these items are smaller, kitchen equipment can be provided by the owner, damp proofing on the foundation walls, we don't have a basement in this building, so the damp proofing really wasn't providing a lot of value. And there were a number of other areas where it was felt that adjustable shelving could be used instead of cabinets, some reduction in trim, and other similar items as that. We also noted that there's a sign that was included down by Albuquerque Avenue, and we have signage on the building already. I think folks will certainly know it's a fire station, so that was felt could be an area for some savings. So that's a quick rundown of the 30 some odd items that helped contribute to the one and a half million dollars in savings. Want to speak to any of the owner's soft costs?
So some of the adjustments in the owner's costs were cutting the furniture fixtures and equipment line and addressing it as we go forward. The biggest cut in the FFNE was the deferring of the antenna, foundation, and tower, the communication system, and going back and looking at the larger scale plan that we had had done for townwide communications at some point in the future. So that actually was the biggest chunk of that $197,000 that was cut. And then as Preston said, some adjustments to contingencies because, again, as the number came down, we adjusted the contingency down, and some cuts to IT and testing inspections because we've already done some of that. So that would be the adjustments in the owner's soft costs.
One of the things we were asked to do at the bond hearing was to do some research on recent station projects that have been completed in New Hampshire, and to do an evaluation of how this station stacks up on a cost per square foot basis. As I noted at the last meeting, this is sometimes difficult because stations, all stations are different and there are different cost drivers. What we've done here is basically researched information that's available through the newspapers and online sources to prepare a graph of about 20, 18 to 20 different stations. What we're showing here is total project cost, so that includes the construction costs and the soft costs, adjusted to $2018. This chart, I realize it's probably hard to read some of the names, I'm happy to kind of list them off, but it does include both new construction and addition and renovation projects. Addition and renovation projects can vary wildly, and this is a new construction project, but for the sake of transparency, I wanted to include all those numbers as well. So, you can see the Litchfield Station is highlighted in red at $339 a square foot. This chart includes project costs in the range of $493 a square foot, all the way down to $134 a square foot. And you can see that there is, I don't know, five or six, seven, eight projects that are all very similar cost per square foot basis to your project. And those include some additions and renovations and new construction projects. The second chart I want to show you, so this is taking that data and trying to go one level deeper. So this looks just at the construction cost portion of the projects that Ekman Construction's been involved with. So we don't have building costs and site costs on all of the projects, but we do have that information on the projects that we've been involved in. So, this gives you a comparison, again, Litchfield is shown in red. The taller bars are the building cost component, and the shorter bars in orange are site, the site component. So again, this gives you an idea of how site costs can vary dramatically from $16 a square foot all the way up to $63 a square foot. And again, this chart also includes addition and renovation and new construction projects as well. But you can see that your project is following roughly in the middle of the cost per square foot on the construction side of recent stations that Ekman has built or has budgeted. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan or the Chief to talk about the updated plan.
So, what we're looking here is the revised site plan, some of the changes that have been made, if you notice, it's not going to point on the, not going to work on that screen, but I'm going to get up and just point.
Road gear has been reduced to align with the four bays that the station has been reduced to. The site work has been, the rear site work has been eliminated, so the proposed fire station is no longer a drive-through station, it is a back-in-to station similar to what exists today. Parking lot and drainage has been isolated, and will need to be looked at further as should this project move forward. But we're, we believe that the parking lot to the right here will support both public and private, private individuals coming to the station and volunteer responding to the station would park there. Traffic for fire apparatus will be in and out at this location, so they will be backing in Albuquerque to the station. So again, this is the revised floor plans, a couple of changes that have been made. If you see the shadow here underneath, if you will, that was the previous proposal as of a month ago. So by changing out the overhead doors from bifold to overhead, we were able to reduce the depth of the station. We also eliminated a bay, if you will, off the end, so we recaptured all of this, and we eliminated the three offices and hallways to the back. In that change, we did come back and relook at the apparatus, expanded this to capture all 40 lockers for volunteers. We slid these down and eliminated the hallway that would have connected to the future police station. And what we've done is we expanded the storage in the kitchen area so that this, this storage, if you, if you will, could at a later date become the hallway to the addition in the back. With this four stations, four bay proposal, we have everything but the chief's car and the enclosed trailer undercover. The overhead doors would be framed along the back, but we're not putting them in at this time, so it's just four doors, four bays.
And again, you'll see the right-hand side of the apparatus, the remainder of the building is essentially the same. We've gone to four, four bays, and we're just showing the overhead doors along the front elevation of Albuquerque.
Sure. So we'll probably be taking a look at this later as an agenda item, but at the time that I reached back out to the bond bank was our first meeting, when we were talking about getting the bond down to, the project cost down to 3.9. I sent a request off to the bond bank to redo the schedules, and then our follow-up meeting, Ekman Construction and Warren Street was able to find, as you know, about another $200,000, so. So these schedules here represent 3.9, based on the board's decision tonight, I can reach back out and get the schedules made up. But you can see, there's a big, you know, a good size reduction when we went from the 5.5 million down to 3.9, and there'll obviously be a reduction if we're looking at 3.7.
Great. Thank you. Members of the board, questions or comments? John, would you like to, anything you'd like to say about the meeting or anything?
No, I, you said earlier, I mean, we collaboratively worked together and we made some hard decisions, and some of the outcomes aren't what we wanted, but it's what we got, and we're going to make it work.
Mr. Schaefer?
Well, I mean, for the record, 3.7 million is something I can support. I'm all in right now, I mean, I think it's a, it's not going to get any cheaper in the future, and we need to make this move now while we can, while we have the ability, and it's something that we need to move forward and do.
I'm going to speak from both sides, one being the firefighter side, because I, as people who know me, I am part of the fire department. And then I'm going to speak from the Selectman's side. As far as on the fire department's side, it's needed, it's that simple. It's been a long time, the whole time firefighters have worked, and most people would absolutely say no, so it's something that's absolutely, absolutely needed. And just for the record, typically, I abstain on these votes, but this is something, especially with what all these fellows have done in this last week, it's that, something that I absolutely support. So tonight I will be voting on this, and just so you know, Chief, you have my vote, and it's, it's not because I'm a firefighter, it's because the town needs it. It's been a long time coming, and it's well due, so I would ask any of the public, if any of you guys have questions about me voting on this tonight, please reach out to me directly.
Mr. Perry? All right, you ready? I'm going to ask the questions that a lot of people won't ask, so. I understand what's going on. I understand that we're trying to make this more affordable. I understand that at the public thing, there were people that spoke against it. You'll probably have a better chance passing a cheaper building. But what about the people that were supporting it before? Do you consider the fact that maybe this is subpar compared to what you were supposed to be going for? Not driving through, one thing, backing up from Albuquerque, I don't like it. We should at least include to the site plan to drive around back, even if it's only to drive around so you're not backing in from Albuquerque. That's the only negative I have. The rest is the question of what we're saving, how much is the compromise? Chief, what do you think is the biggest sacrifice?
My math is about 350 grand.
For what?
So the additional site work to the back was a savings of roughly $200,000.
$2.75.
$2.75, so maybe you scale it back a little bit, and then you go to add four overhead doors.
I'm not even saying that you have, if you can drive around the building and not be backing up from Albuquerque, wouldn't that be an advantage?
Absolutely. One of the conversations we did have, this project still has to go to bid. This is not the final figure. This project, if approved, will be going out to bid. If there, and the conversation was had, Steve, if there are any savings, any money that could be used or saved from the construction costs, if they come in less, that was going to be, that was one of the things that we were going to address, is to come around the back.
The rear doors are framed, those don't.
They're framed.
So if we do have savings in the bid, we can potentially get it accomplished.
And, and we had also planned to talk with whoever's doing the site work, to tell them, right, this was one of our conversation issues, that, tell them what the intent would be, and to see how much we could get, you know, when we go through construction.
But, Mr. Perry, to your point, I think it would be naive to think that there's $250,000 worth of savings that might, you know, after the bid and after it's approved and after we go forward, to address your issue. At this point, it's kind of in or kind of, it's in or out. I mean, I don't, it's not absolute black and white, but, I mean, I would look to Ekman to say, to set your expectations that we might save enough money in the bid, and we might have enough money.
Well, it was only, that if we do, it was going to be addressed. If we didn't.
It's a drive around anyway.
It was, it was one of the drivers, that if there was excess money at the end of the day, and that was going to be addressed, that was going to be one of the primaries addressed.
There were very difficult conversations that took place over this last week, and truthfully, I think everybody agrees that the station is needed, and I think the chief was driven to getting to a point where this is an absolute, what is essential, and that's what we were trying to get to. We didn't want to leave, in all honesty, we talked about leaving the doors on the back of the building, but someone would object to that because why are you leaving the doors if you don't have the driveway? And then, so we, you know, there was a lot, that conversation really focused us down here. If you want to add something back, that's another whole conversation. Well, I mean, I think that everybody understands what I'm saying. We don't have to have doors on the back of the building to still be able to drive around the building.
If you're going to use it, excuse me, I'll introduce myself, John Deloya with Ekman Construction. We spent a lot of time as a group going through this project, trying to figure out what we could do to listen to the people that spoke, and that was both dollars, size, but while doing that, to make sure we didn't take away and leave the chief with something that he could not function and deal with. Some of the things we're doing construction-wise, we keep talking about the doors, we're framing the opening so you have future options if you need to. We talked about how was it on Albuquerque to be able to back up a truck? Was it a safe situation, was it not? Because if we determined it was. Because if we determined it was not a safe situation, then the discussion of taking the pull-through off the table would've come up. You know, we had these conversations. The group was trying to make sure we did not put yourself in a situation where you were building a station that wasn't gonna function properly. And I think as a group, we set this up to do what you needed to do. Not the extra bells and whistles that some people felt, but set it up so if you determine you wanna do some things or if you can do some site work in the future by a different means, you would have the ability to do that and set yourself up to continue to use the station. So I believe that as a group, everybody had the best interest of the fire department in mind while we did this. And we spent a lot of time coming up with the design that we feel meets with the chief needing.
And Steve, we did everything we did with the concurrence of the chief and the deputy chief.
And honestly, Steve, there were a couple of things that the chief stood up and said, you know what? We have to eliminate this or we have to eliminate that. And I didn't personally agree with a few of his changes that he wanted to make, but it got us to the number that we needed to get to. And after all, looking at the whole project a, a, as, as one unit, it, it fits us perfectly right now.
The other thing I'll add to, to what John said is one of the advantages of doing the construction management approach is, as Mr. Lamir indicated, the project will be fully bid out after a successful bond vote. So we, we have a design right now for the full build-out of that site. That can be bid as an alternate. So in the event that, that we are able to afford it or someone comes forward and is willing to make a generous contribution to the project in order to, to help complete additional site work, we have that option and depending on the pleasure of the board and the, the chief, be able to pursue that at that time, too.
Evidently, nobody's supposed to ask the question.
So, if I.
I, I don't have, I, I, I don't disagree with the project. I understand the need, I've said it all along. But I also backed it when it was five point five million, because that's what we need. That's what's gonna bring us thirty years down the road. That's not gonna make us need to put more money into it five years from now. It's not gonna be an extra three hundred thousand dollars a year, because we didn't do it when we built it. That's my point. That's my only point.
I understand your point. And trust me, I believe some of us felt the same way you did. But what we needed to do is get to yes. We needed to get to a point where all of us, those that were against the project, those that were for the project, came together to present a package that we hope that the public will vote for. Because we need to get to yes, all the way around.
So Steve, the other thing, too, is the, what you heard at public, the public hearing, is only less than a third of the comments, comments that they're considering. There was very spirited conversations on social media, WhatsApp page, that, they were down the middle in a lot of ways. Too expensive, not expensive enough, just right, too, too glamorous. And so all those are the factors we put in, we brought into play. We think we got a, we got a, we got a building that we can expand, you know, enhance on to as we have more money or as things change, or if the bid comes in, you know, a lot more aggressive. It wasn't, it wasn't a pretty six hours, trust me.
No, it was very intense.
Chief, I still support you. I still support.
We appreciate it. And I, if I can, it comes down to wants and needs. You know, it'd be great to have the ability to drive around and back in like we do now and get us off the road. But the reality is, we had to get it to a number that was gonna be supported. Where, you know, whatever changes we made, we've tried to set the building up for the ease of modifications, expansions and so forth down the road. And, and, you know, simple things like that. The doors have been, the rear doors are framed out. So if it works out, that they get at it at some point, the hard part's already done. Because it's easier to do it now than go back and reframe it later. The, the storage in the kitchen, you heard John mention. We eliminated a hallway because essentially it was a dead-end hallway by taking the rear offices off the building. It gave us the space we needed in the gear room. But we've made the provision for a hallway in the future to a, a potential or future police station component. So I, I think, you know, as much as we've made some, some cuts, and I'll, and I'll admit this, you know, it's, um, there's, there's not a lot of storage space, but it's still exponentially better, safer and healthier than what we're in currently. And, and the bottom line is, we need to do something. And we had to determine what, at what line that something was.
One other question. What's the ballards?
The concrete posts that basically sit on either side of the door to protect the edges of the doors, so.
The doors are wide enough, they should be.
Forget it, yeah.
Although you did take out a garage, I don't know, we could put balls on top of the building now.
Any other questions?
No, just to, just to build off what Steve said earlier. With regards to the original project, I was and still am in favor of the fi, of the original building at the not to exceed estimate of five point five. Again, it's, it killed me to watch us rip three offices off in a hallway. It killed me to lose the whole bay, because I do believe we need the five bays. But tough decisions were made based on the feedback we received. And this is the result. And I think, to use your point earlier, this will get us into a much better facility and allow us to grow off of it.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, thank you very much. We will need to, um, we're gonna re-vote on this, on the bond with the new number. So we'll do that after.
Yeah, we'll.
What I'll do is take public input now and then we're going to. Thank you very much again. Okay, since it is approximately six thirty-seven, I will open the floor for public input. Members of the public, Mr. Lambert?
Am I the only member of the public to speak this evening?
I don't know, so, but.
I'll let anyone else go first, if they're a member of the public who's gonna speak.
Speak to the fire station?
George, we might be at about six to eight weeks since we had public. Six, eight meetings since we've had public.
You don't have to make it up all in one night.
I will not.
Well, this is, this is George.
Welcome. Good evening. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to address the Board of Selectmen this evening. Mr. Perry made a fantastic point, which is there are some people who might be willing to invest in a more expensive fire station. And if it were me, which it's not, I might suggest that someone approach the DRA and ask if you can divide the question and put two options in front of the voters. Are you willing to support this number and are you willing to support this number? Because if you put two options before the voters, whichever one they choose last is the one that you're stuck with. So if you put the lower number before the higher number and the higher number is defeated, but the lower number is passed, then you actually get your station without a no means no conflict. A little something to consider, dividing the question. And, but that's not really why I was here, to talk to you guys tonight. Thank you for doing so much work to address the public's concern over cost. I am here to address the public's concern over costs of building out a new kindergarten. The Board of Selectmen is the agent to approve and expend impact fees.
Not for school.
You have to approve any impact fee requests that they send to you or deny them.
I don't think we do.
I believe you do.
I believe you do, yeah.
According to a letter from Hage Hodges, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, you act, the, a, a school board has to make a request to you for, to authorize the spending of impact fees and then you approve or reject.
Approve to release them, yeah.
What's that?
Approve to release them or reject, right?
Yes.
We have done that in the past.
Drawn in our books, but.
Presently, there is money collected over the last seven years for expansion or impact to the community for impact fees specifically collected for the elementary school in the amount of, if I may. And I have this paperwork for you, which I will happily email to any of you who would like it. And I've offered it to the public as well. But, just so that I have an exact number, there are two hundred and twenty-three dollar, uh, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and five dollars in impact fees and interests that have been collected and are available to expend right now, out-of-school impact fees specifically for the elementary school. That is according to documents obtained directly from, um, the Planning Board Office. There's a spreadsheet which I have, which is a ledger of available impact fees to spend. I have it both as an Excel spreadsheet and a PDF for you. And lists where all the money came from, but you collected it. I went and checked the impact, uh, the, um, documents, the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and it actually mentions expansion of the school. They mentioned it a couple of years ago. So this is not a surprise or expansion. So since you actually collected impact fees for the expansion of the school and they are readily available and you are the discretionary agents to decide whether or not to make that decision, I would encourage you, if you receive a request from the school board, to actually approve the release of those funds and would ask you whether or not you will commit to releasing those funds if you have a valid plan from the school, so that we can reduce the cost to the taxpayers of the elementary school build-out if we, if the voters approve it. So my request is, will you go out and commit to releasing those funds if you get a valid plan from the school board? I have for you the legal opinions, which were used when I was on the Board of Selectmen, from Hage Hodges. That was our attorney at the time. Some people liked, some people didn't, but they gave us interesting information on this. The last paragraph of which is, in my opinion, in order to construct a legitimate basis for paying for double-wide classrooms at the elementary school with impact fee funds, you just need sufficient justification from the school. The information should demonstrate that the new students being housed at the elementary school did not arrive at the school's, on the, on the school's doorstep solely because of a new kindergarten mandate by the state. This expansion is not solely the result of a mandate by the state. So your previous legal opinion, which is dated December first, two thousand and ten, would give us reasonable justification for the expansion of those fees. I hope I've given you enough information, but not taken up too much of your time. I will answer any questions that you have. And I apologize for exceeding three minutes, which is my goal.
You haven't been here in so long, George, we wanted to make sure that you. Got you. Uh, you are, um, I just wanna make it clear, you're not asking us to contact the school board and push the issue. You're just asking us if they do ask for release of the funds and if it meets the criteria, legal criteria.
Yes.
Um, and if we are on solid ground.
Yeah.
You just want us to.
I want you to, I want you to commit to releasing the funds if they give you a plan that has, that's legally justifiable.
Gentlemen? George, I have absolutely no problem telling you that I would definitely approve that. I don't see the school using the impact fees at all. I've been the one that's been outspoken, trying to say that they need to use them. They need to find reasons to use them instead of us giving them back.
I appreciate that. So will the board actually make a motion and take a vote that will commit to expending those fees if they have a legal justification?
So I don't think we have to, because I think our, I think our past shows that we have.
I would commit, I would share Mr. Perry's view. But I would prefer, um, I, I don't know that I would make a motion. We don't have anything to work with.
All you have to do is demonstrate a willingness.
I would ask a consent, for a consensus of board members. But I would prefer not to have it in the form of a motion, because we don't have. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes.
I have no issue. Yeah, that's fine.
So I can make a, I can go and adequately represent to the public and to the school board and the budget committee that the Board of Selectmen will properly review and if legally justified, release those funds.
But I don't see.
That's a fair representation, is that correct?
Absolutely, because actually we don't have a choice. We need to be able to properly review and we need to release them if, if, um, we're asked. And if, I don't know that we have justification at all.
Just say that, you know, that the board would have a condition that as long as the proposed use of those funds is consistent with the intent and purpose of the impact fee.
Well, exactly.
I agree.
And that was my intent by saying if it's legally justified.
Can I? Because the analysis by Bruce Mayberry is in the legal opinion that you presently have in your possession that was formerly only available to the Board of Selectmen in the school, because it was a legal opinion that was not publicly released, but has now been publicly released. So anybody who wants to read it can actually go and read what, what was said. It's a fair game.
No, I just have a question, because it, it sounds like Mr. Lambert's indicating that we have nev, that there has been, there's been a time where we've said no to the school and I cannot recall.
I, I can't either.
I cannot recall ever when brought forth a plan and the proper request with the proper details, us saying no, because to, to Steve's point, we've been giving it back and they were there for a purpose and we want them to use it because it would help defer other costs.
I asked the superintendent of schools at the same hearing, at the school hearing, budget hearing, whether or not they had attempted to spend this money. They were under the impression they couldn't. And I have that, and that's why I asked for the legal opinions. And so that's why I'm pushing this forward, because I wanna save the taxpayers in Litchfield the cost of this build-out rather than giving this money back.
And I think you have a consensus of this board, that if we are within our rights.
Yes.
And if we, everything is legal, and if it meets the intent of the, um, of, of, of the rules, um, I think you have a consensus that we will absolutely.
And may I communicate that to the, uh, school board and the public?
Absolutely, it's, we're in a public meeting.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that I can go out and like wave a flag.
Prefer the video.
Right. Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, gentlemen. And the taxpayers of Litchfield certainly will appreciate it as well, because if you do that, you will save them all money.
Thank you.
Have a good night, George.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Hey, George, thank you for doing this.
You're very welcome.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none?
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly. Five minutes.
George Lambert, three listings in Litchfield. Thank you, in case I didn't say it, I can't remember. Thank you for working so hard to make sure we have a plan for the fire station. And I would encourage you to look at the option of putting two decisions before the voters, because that way, no one can say they didn't have the right choice and maybe we can finally get a fire station.
Thank you, George. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will close public hearing and move on to approving of the 2018 warrant. The first warrant that we will be dealing with.
Do you wanna do the fire station bond financing first?
Yeah.
Not the financing, I wanna do the approval of the bond first.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, 'cause financing's not necessarily the, as critical as.
The financing's not part of the warrant article, but it'll be part of our presentation next Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Right? Okay, Article four. Uh, what is the amount that we would want to be putting into this? Do you wanna round it to three point seven five million? Or do you wanna leave it at the three point seven two nine?
I, I would go with the five, just for the sake of easiness, but.
Round. Three point seven five?
Yes.
Is that comfortable? Okay, um, so Article four, we'll read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing and equipping the new fire station building and to authorize the issuance of not more than three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of bonds and notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act and authorize the Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof. And to authorize the Selectmen to take any other action relative thereto. Three-fifth ballot vote required. Three-fifth ballot vote required, and we will be putting the estimated tax impact.
Which is still zero for two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a motion to recommend?
I make a motion to recommend second.
Moved by Mr. Perry, second, and by Mr. Brunel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five, zero, zero. Again, I want to thank everyone involved. I, I, this, this was a wonderful effort, and, and hopefully, um, the fruits of all of our labor will be rewarded. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So with the board's recommendation on the board with the three point seven five, does this now go back to the Budget Committee?
What's going to happen is it goes to deliberative session at three point seven five. A deliberative session, um, the board, the Budget Committee will have to vote after deliberative session to, um, change their recommendation if they so desire. And what the Budget Committee's recommendation is at that vote will appear on the warrant, on the vote, uh, on the ballot for the March time meeting.
One last thing. Is, what, what do you want from Warren Street or Ekman at the deliberative session? Anything?
Uh, why don't, can we get back to you on that? We, we'll discuss and, uh, because we have to, uh, talk with the moderator, find out the flow, and that's what we'll be doing tonight. And, um, and we will get back to you, I'm sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tim.
Chief, chief, was, was Sanjay gonna, was Sanjay gonna boost that stuff up?
Guys, just be really, just really quick, John. Just be careful, that walkway outside is a sheet of ice.
So just be careful, even driving home. I slid right past my mailbox tonight.
I just went sideways down my road.
Yeah, ser- seriously. It, it's really starting the ice up, so.
Troy, we're all set with Article Five, right? That's been voted.
That's right. So Articles, so Article Five now you've, you've, uh, approved.
Article Six.
I've identified, I've gone back and researched some minutes and have discovered that, um, I can't find an actual vote on record for some of the articles, so I wanted to bring those back to the board's attention. Article number six, the full-time police officer, I highlighted in yellow, I, I can't find where we've actually taken a vote.
I thought we did.
I, I know, and I.
I, I did too, but it won't hurt to, um, take another vote. Is there a motion to recommend Article Six?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five, zero, zero.
Okay, road improvements, we're all set. We had a five, zero, zero vote. The plow truck, we're all set. We must have had someone absent that night. We had a four, zero, zero vote. Um, the library wage plan implementation, I could not find a, a record of a vote.
Okay, is there a motion for Article Nine?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion?
We didn't have to vote for it, that's why we didn't.
I thought we had to.
Well, it's.
I, I think we do because it's, the money still comes from our appropriation.
We don't have any jurisdiction over the library at all.
Right, but we have jurisdiction over the money they get.
But it's a, it's an appropriation.
Right. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five, zero, zero. Building Systems Trust Fund, Article Eleven. Is there a motion to approve? I recommend.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion?
What's in the account now?
What's the trust fund? Building Systems, we have thirty thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
We're taking it from that aside, fund balance if it works out.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five, zero, zero. We have a new article, Article Thirteen, and this again, um, it's as a result of the public hearing. Um, it's entitled "Disposal of the Fire Station Building", and the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to demolish or transfer ownership of the fire station building located at two fifty-seven Charles Bancroft Highway. This article is contingent on an affirmative vote on Article Four, which approves funding for the construction of the new fire station building. Should Article Four fail, this article shall be null and void." Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion?
You bet.
Okay.
I'm with him.
Why are we transferring? Why don't we just demolish it?
Why are we do, why are we doing anything with it?
Great story.
There's been a significant, about a significant storm on people wanting to know exactly what we're doing with this building.
Right. And they do not want, they do not want us to be maintaining that building after the new building is built.
Yeah, the Budget Committee's perception is that this building will continue being a draw for the taxpayers if we keep it. That's one opinion.
Right.
And then.
Who runs the town?
We do.
All right.
And the voters do. The voters do too.
Thank you.
But I understand the voters have a say.
But this, the, the thing about this though is.
But this allows them to determine.
Yeah, if they say, if this gets, if this is defeated, the building stays and we don't go figure out what to do for something else, because at the end of the day, we could use it for cold storage.
Why, why would we ever get rid of a building we could use for cold storage that would cost nothing a year to maintain?
The belief is that that's not, that's not an accurate statement, that's why.
Right.
Okay, it might cost, uh, an extra five hundred dollars to plow the, the parking lot, but you already have to plow anyway.
Personally, I wanted to defer this whole discussion until after we get building, and they made a decision at the end, but this is, the, the voter, residents have been asking for, what are we going to do with this building? This, as Brett said.
And especially social media.
Yeah, and this built, this, this, this gives the voter a choice.
I think it's crazy.
All we're doing is asking for their, um, we're asking for voter input.
Did, did you ask if they could, if we could use it for cold storage?
No.
No.
I mean, we're looking at two to three years from now ultimately, right? I mean, two years.
Oh, yeah.
Always go back forward and say, we need the building and ask them to overturn.
Personally, I would just take, I would just take this article right off until, until we see if we even get a new fire station.
It's been stated the Budget Committee wouldn't support the fire station if this building was there.
You know, they need to grow up.
They do need to grow up. I agree with you, Steve.
I'm just saying, at the end of the day, that part of the feedback was, what are we doing with the building? I can't support the bill, the, the fire station without knowing what this building's going to go to.
Right.
Even though we're looking at two to three years out before we can even make a decision on the building.
Right. Could I always tell them they're going to sell it to me for a dollar and then they'll be happy, right?
Well, the, the reason, when, when I drafted this, I, I knew that there was discussion about, um, this, you know, demolishing the building. But I also occurred to me that it is, we may receive a request to transfer ownership, and maybe the church next door might want to acquire it and take on the long-term maintenance of the building. Maybe the Litchfield Historical Society may want to acquire it, uh, you know, so that's why I used the language of transfer.
And maybe the street district, because they're autonomous, they could, um, they may want to acquire it and transfer money to the town for its use.
That'd be great for like their maintenance.
Right.
That's, that's why I say, yeah, that, that the word demolish is, to me is crazy.
Well, I think what's interesting is that it gives us a direction, demolish or transfer. If someone comes up and says they want it, it won't be demolishing the building.
Right.
But it has to, it, the, the end of the day, that whatever this does, it's out of the town's hands. It's long up, long to the town. That's what, that's what we're asking the voters to decide on.
Right. To dispose of it one way or another.
Yeah, dispose of an asset.
Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed. I, oh, this is right.
Okay, motion fails. Two.
Well, we'll, we'll take it off.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's gone.
All right.
Right, I mean, it's.
That's a lot of it. We could, we could still, we still could leave it on the warrant and let the voters still decide.
Just not being recommended by the selectmen.
The selectmen not recommending it, because again, this is being done out of feedback that we're hearing, and the voters want the right to decide.
All right, so you want to let it go without a recommendation? I'm okay with that.
Well, no.
Show the recommendation to show I'm not going to support it.
Yeah, they can say, "Not recommended by the board."
I see. Okay, um.
So if you want.
It is confusing, because as we would put it by that point.
So we will put it as not recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, two, three, zero.
It was one, where we have four?
Two, three, zero.
Two, three, zero.
Four to one.
And I think, and I think the feedback is, is that it's too soon to decide what's the appropriate.
Right.
You know, desecrated building, and we're looking at two, three years out before we're totally out of that building, and things may change, and our needs may change for some, for some other disaster, right?
Okay, Article Fourteen, Beautification Expendable Trust Fund. This is a petition warrant article. "To see if the town will vote to establish a town beautification expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon nineteen A for the purpose of enhancing community pride and identity in a variety of ways, such as but not limited to purchasing flowers, trees, shrubs, signs, holiday decorations, monuments, and other amenities to improve the visual appearance of town buildings, facilities, roadsides, and landscaping. Further, to raise and appropriate two thousand, five hundred dollars to put in the fund. Furthermore, to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund based on proposals or petitions received from town citizens, groups, and/or boards and committees. Estimated tax rate impact less than one cent." I'll entertain a motion from the board. No one would like to recommend?
So it's a petition warrant article, correct?
Right, we don't have to.
Well, it's asking for money, so we have to.
It's asking for money, so you need to make a.
I, I'll tell you why I'm hesitant. We already get a lot of this already. People donate. We've always done other investment. I just don't understand the. If someone, if, if someone came to us and said, we want to go do a project and can we get a, you know, money? I'm sure we could find, if they wanted to beautify the town hall, that would come out of the town hall budget if it made sense. And it's something we have to raise the dollars and put in a bank account somewhere and never, and have it, you know, again, it's a small amount. Probably like my splitting hairs, but, I mean, I, I, these, I know why they brought it forward, I get it, but.
I, I think the intent is honorable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and I, I believe it'll be a vehicle for those people that would like to engage in these activities to see, and it, it'll be a method that people could contribute and, um, improve the visual appearance of.
Well, I don't see anybody, I, I don't see anybody contributing. This is asking the taxpayers to raise twenty-five hundred dollars.
To start, but the fund will be there in case, to accept donations and.
So do we have to even, do we even have to fund the fund? Can't we create the fund with a dollar and say?
Well, you can't change.
It's by petition, so we can't change.
You can't change it, because it's a petition.
So the real question is whether you recommend it or not. I think the intent here was, of the petition was to get seed money.
Right.
Just to get, uh, some of this stuff, uh, oops, started.
But I will want the board to be aware, uh, that we, we reached out to legal counsel,
and this is not a revolving fund. It's an expendable trust fund.
If anyone comes forward and they donate money for a specific co, you know, just say flowers, to the town office,
you have to vote to accept those and you have to hold those separately.
For flowers, right?
For flowers. You cannot deposit into this fund.
Right, so what's the purpose of the fund?
Ah.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Didn't we, and we advised the petitioners, didn't we?
We, I've worked with the petitioner on, on, um, the wording of this article. I mean, originally, we're looking, they were looking at more money, but.
But do they know that?
He, yes, they do.
That he won't be able to put donations in there?
Yeah.
So I, I, to me, that means the intent's kind of messed up at this point.
Yeah.
At least as I understood it, anyway.
What is the will of the board, please?
Well, we ought to make a vote either way, so I'm going to make a vote to recommend Article Fourteen.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second through the vote.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion? Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Right.
Three, aye?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries three, two, zero.
It's a little money, it's like, I just don't understand.
And I believe that's it?
And I think that's, that's it.
Okay. All right. Our esteemed moderator is in the room.
Don't, don't call him esteemed, it's just, that just goes right to.
He is our esteemed moderator. Mr. Reagan, try to the mic.
I think I have a different version now, right?
You, I did print this out, and it includes that.
Okay.
Which one? Oh, the fire station demolition. Uh, introducing you to my, my assistant, Dan Regan.
Hi, Dan, welcome. You were a good assistant at voting last time.
We're going to get him up on the, on the podium maybe and get him active somehow.
There you go.
We'll see. So, he's, he's disagreeing with you.
He's like, hook.
Have you discussed this with your son?
Yes, I have, actually.
Just because you say, just because you say it doesn't mean it's true.
Yeah, really.
What could happen?
So, um, do, I, I'm just here to find out who's going to speak so I can get my notes together and, and, and prepare for the, for the day. Uh, looks like we had a couple of changes since the version I got. Um, that's it, really. I don't have any real, I, I went, I went through the ones that I saw, and I'll pick out the ones that's different now. Um. Sort of fire station bond amount, I don't know if you were here when they voted, but that changed to three point seven five zero.
Really?
Three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Three million, seven fifty thousand, okay.
And I think the only other change.
So two places on that, three, seven, fifty on, on, there's twice, okay?
Yes, right.
Yeah, what else?
The only other change was the, was the addition of the, um, question to demolish or transfer ownership of the old fire station, or the, the fire station.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Who is gonna, and you're going to make final, final letters and give me a final copy before?
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so who's, who's speaking to each one then? Number, number two, Article Two.
John Regan.
No, I'm not.
Um, the zoning amendments, I assume someone from planning. I don't know. Yeah. Usually they should.
It's usually the chair, right?
Um, last year, they didn't have anybody.
Can you help me find somebody that would?
Sure.
Do that one?
Two articles.
Yeah, Article number two and three.
Okay.
Who's speaking to the fire station?
I, I will start and introduce the fire chief, and then he will introduce the, um, the architects and to present the revised proposal, John.
Okay. Are you, you expecting any kind of, um, mass uprising, or?
Uh, hopefully not, because we've just worked for a week to reduce that.
Yeah.
We have a brand-new plan that, uh, we have, um, we've got, we had a group of people, including members of the Budget Committee, our Board of Selectmen, the fire chief, the architects, we came to unanimous agreement on, um.
The new?
On the new proposal.
Does that change the recommendation at all?
Um, it changed ours. The Budget Committee will vote after deliberative session.
Okay, and they'll discuss that?
On the ears, because it'll be the first time they meet.
Yeah.
To.
Since their, the original hearing.
That being said, I, I think there's definitely going to be people talking.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there'll be people up at those microphones, there's no doubt.
But I, I think it's, I mean, but they've already heard the five point five, so.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, they, you know, it's a huge ticket item, so.
They're going to be pleasantly surprised when they see the new number.
Yes, well, we're hoping.
Is that strategy or just?
Well, it's a lot of work.
Not really.
We need to get something.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, the whole point was, a public hearing is there for people to give you input, and we needed to listen. We did, went back and came back with.
Good, good.
We did our homework.
Good. How about the operating budget five?
Um.
Let me do it.
Huh?
Do I normally do it?
Do you, do you want, try, how about? Yeah, do you mind, try?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
And the police officer?
Well, the police chief.
So the captain would do it, right?
Or the captain, whoever the chief, um.
I think it's going to be, uh, the captain.
Which?
Ben Sargent.
Okay.
Okay.
I think Ben is going to speak to it.
Maybe you can just confirm that.
I will.
All right, um, Road Improvement Projects, Jack?
Selectman Perry. And if he would like Jack to help him, he'll be.
It's going to be that one. Might as well do the next one.
Yeah.
If the truck leaves.
Sure, I'll do the truck too.
As he was.
As he will do Article eight also. With Jack. Right?
Yeah. They're pretty straightforward, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Article nine, the library?
We will ask the library representative to.
Do that, I mean, I think in the past, the TA has done it too, if they're not there.
I'm sorry, usually the libraries have somebody.
Yeah.
Library trustees or.
The library director.
Library, so I'll get a confirmation to you. And the time accrual expendable trust fund?
Town administrator, come on.
I can do that one.
Building systems, town administrator.
This is my one day year.
Ten and eleven.
Troy, I love the town, okay?
I can do ten and, and eleven, yes.
Okay. Okay. And twelve is the heritage.
Right, and we will, uh, ask, um, the, I think it's vice chair of the planning board.
Yes, Kim.
Uh, Kim.
I'm assuming she's probably gonna do number two.
Okay.
No, number three.
I think.
I'm assuming she's gonna do number three, so she'll probably also do the heritage commission at number twelve.
And there was some discussion, I don't know if she'll, I, I, I talked to uh, Joan, the, uh, the, the planning board assistant. And they will have to have a conversation with you about possibly moving Article twelve up after they address Article three. It'll be a, they may ask for a motion to move it up because they, they kinda connected, yeah.
To discuss it in different.
I don't know. I, it was mentioned to me and I just said you'd have to discuss that with them.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that connected, Troy.
The contingent upon each other.
They are, but they aren't, yeah, I, I mean, it won't be that long, they won't have to wait that long.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, number thirteen, fire station disposal?
Want me to talk to that?
Do you wanna do that, John?
I can do it, I don't care.
Sure.
You can back me up.
Alright, I'll back you up.
Alright, and the beautification fund?
We'll ask the petitioner.
Petitioner, do we know who it is?
I think it's Jason Brennan.
Jason Brennan?
Yes.
So, really, you're not, you're not expecting any other than the fire station to be the only real big interesting one?
I think that would be, that would definitely will talk.
Yeah.
I think there'd be a lot of feedback.
Okay.
We're, we're what, February third at ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
What am I missing on the, on the, on the fire station bond? That the expected tax rate impact for twenty eighteen is zero, cause it's not gonna be done by then, right?
Because the first payment isn't till twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, sorry.
That's gonna come up, is a question, right, right?
Yep.
We, we presented it that way at the bond hearing and at the, at the many different presentations.
Did you have any takers at that meeting?
At the bond hearing?
Um.
Well, same as at the public hearing and. I, I didn't see it till the day after, from the sign.
There were, there were a few people there.
Yeah, there was a few, I mean, I would say there was.
Just over fifty?
Maybe, uh.
Fifty to seventy-five?
It was better attended than I actually thought it would.
I was suggesting to you, you know.
It's deliberate.
I'm, I'm guilty. I don't, I don't watch the webpage to see what's going on, to attend all the meetings I could.
It's on YouTube, babe, just subscribe to it, you can watch it, and you'll lose your.
Yeah, but I wanna be there. I, I like to be there. And it's not just me. It, you know, you've done this, we've, we've got these subscriber lists for the school and for, you know, emergencies and so forth. Do you have a subscriber list for, that mail goes out to interested parties to attend meetings like that?
No, we haven't done that. We have, we can subscribe to the calendar and get updates on the events that way, but the uptake hasn't been there.
No.
We have the reverse dialer for when we can leverage that, but that's also people that'll come and subscribe and I think that, that's pretty much slowed down also. So, I mean, I.
I was just thinking, if you, if you're interested in the town, send a mail message here, it's, the moderators group has a.
Yeah, we can do, we could do that. I mean, we could put up a sus- a subscriber list and they can go and get emails from us.
For the, you know, when you send it there, the, the people that are interested get it and they can choose to come or not, I don't know, it's a suggestion.
And we post most of our stuffs on, in social media, so we hope it should help be a Facebook and Twitter. Um, in addition to being on the website, but.
Since I stopped hanging around with you, I don't do any of that stuff.
It's been a long time, huh? And have your son look at it, he'll, he'll tell you when something's going on.
That may be what we do. That's a good idea.
Yeah, there's a meeting coming up, let's go.
That means he can.
If he wants to go.
That's it for me. Do you have anything for me?
No, I think we're all set. The school's okay for deliberative and.
Yeah, I, I meet with them on Thursday night to do the same thing.
And they're okay for voting on March?
They don't really have a choice.
No.
They haven't got a choice, that's what I've heard.
Right, okay, I mean, I'm just, we don't wanna, I don't wanna avoid any issues as in the past.
It's been going, do we?
The setup's been going well because we have the new, we have all the new voting booths this year.
All the new?
Yeah, we'll have all new ones.
All new Punch and Juries?
Yeah.
That's great.
Oh, yeah.
We actually met somebody in Milton today that had picked up our old ones.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we were at the fire department and this guy comes walking in and he says, "Hey, you're from Litchfield, I just got some voting booths from you guys."
So you got fifty-some-odd Punch and Juries? You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
Cool.
So.
So we have a little bit of a change then to make, cause now we need a barrier around the, around the booths. Where before we had the booths as the barrier.
It's more chain, right, yeah, we used to use the back wall, L shape.
A chain or, or something to kinda separate everything out, not that it's really a an enforceable barrier, but.
But we should buy some more yellow chain than plastic chain, huh?
Yeah.
Stanchions.
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I'm, 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 I can get that, I can get the contact where I got it before anyway.
Okay, okay, alright, chains.
Alright, good. So I'll talk to you about other names and a new copy and.
I'll get you a new copy and I'll confirm the planning board, presenters, police, and library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Dan. Nice to see you again. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Alright.
See you guys.
Item four, fire station bonding options, Mr. Brown? Or do you wanna defer that, or can we, or? Until you get, uh, updated figures?
Well, I guess what I want, I wouldn't have a, because you know, we're gonna, if we present, I have like six different options that we continue to see and I just think it's, um, we could have those ready in case people ask, but I really think if we're asked the question, um, you know, we, we should have a consensus of what it is that we're looking to finance and so that's what I wanted to accomplish this evening was, um, to really get the board, um, if you could come to an agreement on which note, you know, the term of the note and whether we're gonna do limited principal, level debt. I think it's gonna be a lot easier as we try to get the information out to the residents that we can tell them, you know, what we are expecting this cost impact to be um, on the homeowner. And that's what they're really looking for.
Looking at these numbers, why would you not do level debt?
Cause your interest payment is higher.
So I, let's see here. I get back.
A hundred thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
On finance. And you're reducing by over twenty dollars a year on your tax bill.
Mm-hmm. What I've heard, just it's not been a lot of input, but I've heard from different people. No one's really been approaching me about supporting, uh, a long-term note. So fifteen year seems to be what I've been hearing and it's been a limited number of folks, but, you know, it, it comes from residents, budget committee members. I know the chairman of the budget committee told me the last note that the school department did was a fifteen-year note.
I'd go with fifteen.
I like fifteen.
And then what I've been told, um, and kinda, I, I understand it, the, if you go with the fifteen-year level principal, the first year of that bond payment is gonna be the highest tax impact. Every year thereafter, the, the, uh, annual debt payment decreases. So, um, over the next fifteen years, that debt payment on an annual basis will decrease. It's a very helpful tool because, you know, operating budgets always have some increases and, um, and you know, we're gonna be talking, over the next fifteen years, it shouldn't be a secret. You know, we're gonna be having some capital needs, both on the school side and, you know, we're gonna need fire equipment. So it'd be good to have a structure where we do have the debt payments going down. Um, I just, if you, I did attach way down at the bottom, uh, a schedule of the fifteen-year level debt and the fifteen-year level principal. The level principal is the one that goes down.
I would say it drops a couple, like, four thousand dollars every year. But the principal stays the same the whole time.
The principal stays the same, your interest, you know, so your first year is your highest payment and then everything decreases each year, but it's, it's basically your interest.
And if we do level debt, the payments go up every year.
They.
They go from two sixty-eight five to three nineteen.
I'd say fifteen.
That makes no sense.
It should, um.
Should go the other way?
The calendar year payments, um, they, see what they're doing, they, they're, it doesn't really, it starts off with the level, the level debt. Is the calendar year total payment, the first year, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Oh, I see.
And then the last year of it is three twenty-four. So if they try to keep it level as they can.
I just took total payment, okay, I didn't have the two numbers.
So you can see your estimated tax rate impact almost, almost the same every year. So whether, you know, if you go with a twenty-year, twenty-five-year, or thirty-year, that's, that's what you're doing. It's just obviously the longer you spread it out, the more interest you're gonna pay.
Takes seven years before you get to the same payment from the pr- level principal then to the level debt. I honestly think that the level debt at twenty years is perfect.
That's a long time.
I, I'd prefer to go fifteen.
We've been told that fifteen's a good number by, like we said, people, budget committee, the public.
The people that run the town.
So.
I mean, just because you don't like the fifteen doesn't mean it's wrong.
Actually, if I was doing this with my money, I'd do the fifteen in a second. But if I'm gonna think of the taxpayer that just made us redo our plans to reduce the cost of the station, do you not think reducing the cost on their wallet is gonna be better? I mean, isn't it a lot nicer to tell somebody, you know, for a hundred and ten bucks a year, you're gonna get a brand-new fire station? Okay, it is a twenty-year debt, yep. Hundred and ten bucks a year. I don't know. Tell somebody it's a hundred and thirty-three. Or better yet, level principal, a hundred and fifty-four. Now all of a sudden, people might say, whoa. Why is it forty dollars more? Why is it a hundred and fifty?
That's per year, right?
That's per year.
Right.
Per year.
And again, this, these numbers are based on three point nine, not the three point seven five oh. Um.
Telling you, a hundred bucks a year. Troy, Troy during the last meeting was telling us and, and I.
We were going twenty, twenty-five.
And, and I didn't, and I didn't like it, but he was saying that it's normal for people to go twenty-five or thirty because it extends the life of the loan to those that will use the building. So if I'm outta here in fifteen years, I just paid for a fire station in a town I no longer reside in and the person that buys my house has it already paid for.
That's just, that's weird to think that way, I mean, wouldn't you want it to be? I mean, some, someday down the line, we're gonna have another expense. I don't know what it'll be, it'll be something. And wouldn't you like to be closer to paying off the loan instead of, you know, let's say in ten years, something happens, I don't know, something.
Say we build a school and you promise to give all the money back. And then the year the money's supposed to come back, you actually get a hit for a million dollars more.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Is that a good example?
Uh, no, I'm not talking about that. Uh, the, the point I'm making is, is that, you know, we don't wanna tie ourselves down for a long time either.
I think a hundred bucks a year is a great way to sell it. Twenty-year level debt. Cause like Troy said, this said three point nine, when it's three seven five, it's gonna be a couple of dollars less maybe, but.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, or several motions.
I'll make a motion for the twenty-year level debt.
Second. Moved by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Bor. Further discussion.
I already said my.
All those in favor of twenty-year level debt, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four, one, zero.
Can you prepay the bond?
I don't know the answer to that.
Just wonder if, you know, if you can do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next item.
Twenty-year level.
Year-end financial update, encumbrances. Is that the same as year-end projections that?
Yeah, so, uh, we're not, the books aren't completely closed yet, but uh, we're pretty much wrapping everything up, so. I just wanted to give, the, the numbers really haven't changed a whole lot from our projections. We're still looking at, um, the operating budget, uh, uh, unexpendated balance of eighty-seven thousand with the police officer Warren article, uh, we, again, I, as I reported the last time we looked at this, we didn't, we didn't expend any funds from the Warren article that appropriated, um, funding for the six months of the new officer, so we still have the thirty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars. And then the, the action that the board took with the, um, crediting, um, the purchase of the cruiser, well, using the special detail fund, brings us to total estimated, um, unexpendated balance this year of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Now that number primarily, um, is driven by uh, the, the police department where we're, we had some vacancies and changes in staff and, and the accounting department, we had some vacancies. Um, and then there's other areas throughout the budget where there's other turnbacks, but primarily it's the personnel changes that, that created that, um, turnback. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. I don't anticipate there being any surprises. These numbers, um, pretty good. We, I'm, I'm not, you know, the most of the bills are in, there's utilities, all those unknown things are in, so. A good year.
Good.
With everything, you know, we were, we did, uh, a really good, strong ending.
Yeah, we got whacked with weather problems at the end of the year. We're lucky to get through those.
Yeah.
Alright, encumbrances?
So, encumbrances. So the, the last action the board took, you just did a bottom-line encumbrance. And now I wanna come back and ask the board if, if you would consider doing line by line like we do every year. Um, for these items, the, the numbers decreased a little bit because under IT, um, what we did was we did a bottom-line encumbrance and then we've been expending funds. Karen's been, Karen and John have been charging against the line, so we've reduced that, that's why, you know, the number you saw last time was a hundred and twenty-three thousand, I think. And so we're, we're looking at a bottom-line encumbrance of about a hundred and seventeen thousand seven forty-two.
Just for the, no, a hundred and twenty-three thousand to I T.
No, 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 yeah, bottom, the whole. So, um, I don't know how you'd like to do this, but we'd like to have it, uh, you know, reflected in the minutes, the auditors. Refer to this, um, every year as they, they look at our encumbrances. No actions required on the reencumbrances, you took action at your last meeting on that.
All right, how about if I read the line by line and then we'll take one vote, uh, at.
How about we discuss if anybody doesn't like anything that's in there first, before you go through the effort of reading it?
Okay, I was gonna read it and then ask that question, but that's okay, go ahead.
Um, what did the earned time buyout for the chief cost last year, was it fifty-five, fifty-four and change?
Fifty-eight thousand dollars.
The only reason I ask that is, do we wanna bump that line up a little to meet that number?
Uh, isn't that the next item on the agenda anyway? The earned time buyout?
Yes, it's not a, um. That's a good point. Because I, what I was going to do was, uh, reach into our capital reserve fund, but with our budget estimates, I think that's, that would be a wise decision.
Because we have a few thousand dollars extra, it looks like that's gonna get turned back.
Sure.
It's an expense that we have anyway.
Right.
It's just putting the money in there.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Uh, so what would that amount be?
So let me put it in. So that would change the bottom line to one hundred twenty-five thousand seven forty-two. Just gotta refresh, right?
There we go, yep. Okay, I will read them to enter them into the minutes, um, the encumbrances. Number one, from the fire department software contract to bridge the Hudson and Litchfield radio systems, three thousand five hundred. Recreation, river access project, five thousand, assessing services, update and Penncheck abatement, thirty thousand. Road agent, um, M S four storm water permit fee, ten thousand. General government buildings, um, meeting room conference table for five thousand. General government buildings, A D A door closures for the front of the town hall, four thousand. Information technology, five thousand seven hundred sixty-three. Police department, um, scanners, one thousand four seventy-nine. General government buildings, uh, welcome to town, sign for the north end, three thousand dollars. Uh, personnel earned time buyout, fifty-eight thousand, for a total of one hundred twenty-five thousand seven forty-two. Is there a motion?
So make a motion to.
I move.
To encumber.
To encumber.
I'll second.
Moved by Mister Perry, seconded by Mister Brunel, discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero zero. Okay, Mister Brown, earned time buyback request.
Okay, so, as, as the board's aware, we, uh, the board has a memorandum of understanding with Chief O'Brien. Uh, where we're trying to purchase, uh, his unfunded liability, if you wanna call it that, of the earned time he's accrued. During the tenure of his service here at the town, um, and as we just discussed, we think the payout this year. Uh, will be in the amount of about fifty-eight thousand dollars, that amount calculates all the benefits, payroll taxes, everything included. So Chief O'Brien has asked if we would, um, reimburse him, um. For four hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty hours of vacation and four hundred and sixty hours of sick time. This would be at the agreed hourly rate of forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, that's not his current, uh, rate of pay today. That's the vested, uh, rate that we had negotiated.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mister Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Brunel, discussion, questions?
Uh, uh, do we need to put a date as to when to do this, or?
Looking for, he, he's requesting maybe do it in January, this month. We just encumbered the funds, right, so.
And we're, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'll say. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries five zero zero.
The reason why I asked that is because the agreement that we signed, it said in March.
Yeah, at the time, that was, he thought the way he was gonna be staggering things, uh, but for whatever reason, he. Um, he said he could move it up to January this year, so.
Okay, earned time waiver. Mister Brown.
All right, so our finance director, um, Karen White has asked if the board would consider waiving the, uh. The maximum accrual amount for earned time due to, uh, staffing shortages where she's covering. For the vacant, uh, accounts payable clerk, payroll clerk right now, um, we've had some issues obviously with, uh, town treasurer. Um, and looking into the future, it's probably not gonna be, uh, any time for Karen to take time off. Um, and she's accruing two and a half days a month, so it'd be very difficult for her to take time off. Um, and do the job that she's doing today. So she has asked if we would consider, um, waiving this requirement, uh, to the end of this year. And we'd have to reassess because she, you know, possibly in the two thousand nineteen, it all depends on. You know, when, uh, the accounts payable clerk, payroll clerk's able to return back to work. Um, and again, that person was just hired, so we were just starting the training of that individual, so even when the person comes back. They are not fully trained yet, so it's still difficult for Karen, um, to leave on vacation. When the person's not, you know, able to run the payroll by themselves yet, or accounts payable by themselves.
This is crazy. To have one person solely be responsible for that, it's just absolutely crazy.
Well, that's why we hired the other person.
I get that, but even hiring the other person, just having that one person is crazy. To have a whole town rely on one person, it's crazy.
No, we're gonna have to, I did do.
Cross train some other people.
I did do some training on payroll, but, um, um, no, I did.
So, and I think even the, the, I know. Our, the receptionist of France been doing some training, been doing some in three, so there's been a lot of, people have stepped up and helped out a lot, it's just.
Can the police department administrator help out?
You'd have to talk to, I mean, at the end of the day, you gotta take her with her job.
Two hundred and forty hours is the max, I thought it was three twenty.
Well, for her, because if you had, if she had longer years of tenure, she would be at the three, yeah.
Okay, so.
I didn't even consider that last year when I was talking about all this.
Can we get a temp? Why can't we get a?
I was just gonna ask that, if there's any way to get a temp.
It has to be temps. Well, the, the temp a, unfor- the temp agency that I used, uh, the last time, that specialized in municipal accounting. Uh, has sensed that, that business is dissolved and she's gone on full time, um, with another school department. So for having someone be able to come in, actually very familiar with the software, um, and do the work, it's. That individual was very helpful and because she was doing that work throughout the state. As of right now, there's, there's really no one, um, with that skill set.
To me, it's.
No one in the whole state.
Well, I could go to a temp agency, but then we're gonna have to train that person to be able to do the work, so it's, we just find it's just easier. And just do the work ourselves.
So then why don't we cross train Donna to do some?
We, we are.
Donna has been, like I said, Donna's been entering, uh, she's been doing work, um, but here we are, you know, we're doing. Right now, we're doing year end, closing things out, Donna's doing town report, I'm trying to get ready for deliberative session, I mean. There's a lot going on right now.
It's a tough time to get a habit.
It's a real tough time.
Yeah.
I just get it, but, you know, how fair is that to her?
It's not fair, she's under, she's under a lot of, uh, stress.
She was here till five thirty tonight, too.
So, you know, the biggest thing she's looking for here is just some support to be able, be able to continue to do the job she's doing. Um, but, you know, she doesn't wanna be losing two and a half days of vacation time, I don't wanna be taking the time off.
Just pay her out for a week so she won't be losing and she can bank the cash.
That was gonna be my other thing, is do we just offer to pay her for time to reduce it to a point? Because I'll tell you, the way this goes, I don't. I don't necessarily have a problem going through this year, but I'm not gonna go into next year. Next year's next year, I mean, because the problem is, if you let this steamroll too long, you're gonna get to a point where she's gonna have. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty hours over, she's gonna need to take four weeks off in one swoop.
I think, you know, if we, we didn't really discuss actually, um, allowing her to, to buy back sooner than later. But if you were able to grant a one year, um, you know, till December, the end of the year. With the option of being able to sell back some time and let her manage that, I think she would be fine with that. So it'd be a combination of carrying time forward and, and selling back.
Well, I would make the agreement as it's here, that we'll extend. The earned time accrual through the end of two thousand and eighteen. And then I would like to see again if she would like to sell any of her time, another letter that's basically says, hey, can. Can you guys just buy off two weeks or three weeks of my time?
Right.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Seconded by Mister Bork, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion care- abstain, motion carries five zero zero.
Just a question, we talked about, you know, uh, job training and stuff like that, so. I, like I said, I know there's that going on because I see it happening, right, and I see Donna doing a lot of the stuff that Terry used to do from a data entry perspective, that's what she's focusing on. Which is a, you know, a lot of work. The question is, can, you know, what about the part-time clerk next door? Is there any chance that she could come over and, I wonder if days that she's not there, come over here, put eight hours here and get paid by the town to help offset some of that work?
Problem would be.
It's probably training, it's gonna be good.
Probably all be training.
Yeah.
It's training, um, there was some current ac- concern in the past about, um. Some of the, um, the checks and balances of depositing funds, accepting funds and then recording them and, um.
It's also a bad time for them too, because we got taxes and plus they're doing, they're bringing up a new system.
They're bringing up a new software.
Over the next month, they're gonna be busy with that, so it's, again, all bad time.
I asked before, how about the administrative assistant in the police department, could she be a member?
I could, I could ask her, ask the chief and see if there's, you know.
Cycles.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
But we also need to make sure that there's work that she can do.
Right.
And not just go over there and, because we're not gonna spend the time and effort to train somebody to do everything. And then essentially not do it.
No, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to, like Kevin said, have a backup somehow.
Need something, I mean, this is crazy.
And maybe that would be a good backup to have, if she'd be willing to do it and the chief could spare her for a little while. Just a thought. Okay, surplus property, um, Mister Brown?
All right, so we, this, hopefully this is pretty simple, but what happened was the town clerk's office recently changed out their printers. And if you've sat through some of the budget meetings, you'll probably recall the, you always, we're always questioned on the cost of our. Print cartridges for the town clerk tax collector's office. That was the reason we changed the printers out to save us money, anyhow, we have surplus, um, cartridges that. Terry put out on the, uh, her listserv, and there are other towns that, um, are, express interest in purchasing. These cartridges, so, um, it is town property, just wanted to make sure I got board approval. Um, we paid, she said her original price was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And, um, she's been able to have some towns offer a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus shipping, if we would sell them to them.
How many do we own, do you know?
Uh, I think she's probably got s- three, four, three or four of them.
Three or four, I believe, yeah.
See old state printers, they're old printers, no one, you know, so. People who are buying are the ones trying to save money and.
They're just trying to save money and.
I move to authorize town clerk to sell surplus ink cartridges as requested.
Second.
Moved by Mister Perry, seconded by Mister Brunel.
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries five zero zero. Okay, on to, um, administrator report, do you have anything?
I do, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, one thing I wanted to make the board aware of, uh, I was talking with the. Conservation commission, a member of the conservation commission, and they're, you know, w- they're currently looking at. Um, still, still looking at the boat ramp, um, project, trying to, you know, discuss ways, uh. To see if they can get it funded and, um, get the work done this, this summer. And they brought it to my attention that the board, we've recently learned that the board of selectmen are the, um. The authority, uh, agent to actually lease property. So I wanted to bring this forward to you because as we start moving towards getting close to spring and this spring planting starts happening. We might wanna make sure we meet the conservation commission maybe, talk about their plans for this boat ramp. And to kinda get some input from them as to what they wanna see on that property as far as, uh. Any future leasing.
Well, not only that, i- i- isn't some of the property had been planted on in the past?
Yeah, my, my, my fear is that if, you know, I don't want anyone planting anything and then we come in there and, uh, you know, start. Doing excavation work and, and.
They're up the stage.
Tearing up their, their crops.
So.
So, so we gotta make sure we're communicating about that and we also need to make sure we have a lease.
Planning board, should we ask them to come to?
Conservation.
Uh, conservation, I'm sorry.
I think we should get conservation in here first and make sure we have.
Right, and then, and then we're gonna have to negotiate with the, uh.
Based on that meeting, if I know what they're.
Supposed to do it legally.
Right, so just, just be aware, towns, selectmen, uh, only have the authority. To lease property for one year. If you enter into a multi-year lease agreement, it actually has to go to, um, town vote. So some towns do that, they'll negotiate and that may come out of our discussions with the lease, um, that.
But I think it's important to find out what the conservation commission intends on doing with the property first, before we negotiate anything with them. So, can you invite them?
I will.
Um, please?
I'll try to get them in here at our next meeting, because I think it's important, uh, for all parties involved to make sure we start communicating about this.
Okay, all right, next time. Oh, next?
All right, just one, just wanted to, um, make you aware that, um. We talked about this last time, Penncheck water tax abatement mediation session scheduled for February the sixteenth. And, you know, gonna need a couple of selectmen to attend that if possible.
When is that?
Uh, February the sixteenth, at eleven A M, I think it's gonna be up in.
That is a Friday, isn't it?
No.
My birthday.
It is. Oh, well, good day for you to do that.
That's what he wants to do.
Remember the sixteenth is a Friday.
It is a Friday, yeah.
Oh, I, yeah, I've got an, NHMA board all morning, um.
I do a thing called work.
Yeah.
Uh, where is it, Troy?
Uh, it's gonna be a law firm in Concord, I believe.
At eleven?
Yeah, at eleven, yeah.
Um, I can go from NHMA to.
Okay, and I know Kurt, you had mentioned that you thought you might be able to make it, so.
Okay.
If you need me to.
All right.
All right, just, uh, send me the details, whatever, if you would, please.
Do a lot of field trips in this job.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, selectmen reports, Mister Brunel.
Uh, I, all I have is budget hearing in the bond hearing, which you already know about, and the outcome's already been, well, publicized, so. Nothing else, next meeting for me is budget, uh, deliberative.
Okay, Mister Perry? Nothing. Okay, um, a- as I mentioned earlier, we had two, um. Very intense meetings last week, and three of us attended, I also attended the planning board meeting, uh, for Mister Bork. On, um, January, whatever it was, oh, sixteenth, right. And they talked about the community design and the master plan, and so we had input, um, on, on that. Um, we went through, that, that took up probably most of the meeting. And they had a voluntary merger on Talent Road, they discussed capital improvements and, uh, the deliberative session. And that's it for me, Mister Bork? Mr. Schaefer?
I don't have anything.
Okay, um. I, as you move consent, uh, from consent, we have none, there's no other business, next meeting? Items you move consent, uh, from consent, we have none, there's no other business, next meeting. Deliberative session Saturday, February third, twenty eighteen, and we are up first at ten A M at Campbell High School. Uh, next Board of Selectmen meeting will be Monday, February twelfth, at six P M. Is there, uh, we will have a non-public session, uh, but is there any other business to come before this board, before we. Uh, go into non-public session? And before I accept the motion to go into non-public, just to let the public know that we will, um, go into non-public and only come out to adjourn. Um, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into non-public session under R S A ninety one A three two C. Reputation.
So move.
Moved by Mister Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Schaefer, roll call, Mister Brunel.
Yep.
Mister Perry?
Yes.
Yes for me?
Yes.
Bork, Mister Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero zero, on a roll call, we are now in non-public session at seven fifty one P M.